...everyone. Um, tonight, we get to celebrate Lisa Thompson, and I'm sure here at LaSalle, everyone knows Mrs. Thompson, especially the kids. She is our food service manager and also a field specialist for the food service department. Um, if you could go to the next slide, please. One of Lisa's colleagues shared about her that she is a staple for the kitchen and cafeteria at LaSalle. She radiates warmth and genuine friendliness to all who pass through. Lisa greets all the students by name and is always positive with each and every one. From opening ketchup packets to prepping the food line, she is an amazing team player. Effective at her job in so many ways, Lisa is a true LaSalle lion who roars. Um, next slide, please. And Lisa, so Lisa has been with us since 2007. She started as a three-hour cashier at the high school. And then, uh, we're thinking in April 2011, she wa- we weren't 100% sure, but she moved to as it to a head cashier at the high school. And then she came over here to LaSalle for a while, um, and then was able to get a seven-hour job at John Young. Next slide, please. And then after that, uh, she got to move to Beager for a food service manager, and then now here at LaSalle as food service manager. So she's gotten to know a lot of people here at School City Mishawaka and our students as well. Uh, and then may have last year, she gained the title of, uh, field specialist for food service. Uh, and one of the first big tasks was running the food, uh, summer feeding program last year, which that is a really great, uh, great thing that we do for all of our kids. Uh, so, uh, Lisa, she wanted to share, "A huge shout out to my team at LaSalle. My kitchen staff are amazing and they make jo- my job easier. I could not do my job without them." Uh, next slide, please. And then she also wanted to share, "Speaking of LaSalle, boy, did I hit the jackpot with the staff. During COVID, the staff at LaSalle made a very hard time a little easier. So many of them came out to help us serve meals curbside. We are constantly being showered with treats and gifts. They are a perfect example of when the going gets tough, the tough gets going. Our dream team, Ben and Bob, are the best." And I'm guessing most of you probably agree here at LaSalle. How many kitchens can say they impressed the health department by not only getting 100% on their inspections, but doing it when our principal and vice principal were in the kitchen and packing meals to head out the door? I absolutely love my job and am truly, truly blessed to be a part of the amazing team at LaSalle. And then she also shared, "The best part of my job is the kids. As a lunch lady, I get to interact with every single child at LaSalle. Whether they eat a school meal or bring one from home, they are in the cafeteria. I try to get out into the cafeteria as much as I can so I can chat with them." And then another colleague shared this about Lisa. Uh, "She is always willing to go the extra mile for her coworkers and the students she serves. She does her job with excellence. She is easy to work with and makes work fun. She is always there to talk through situations or questions I may have. She is a good listener and is so encouraging and I can always depend on her. I'm lucky to work closely with her and to call her my friend." And then if you don't know, uh, Lisa is actually in her third year working for the athletics department where she sells tickets. And she did say this is a very fun job. Uh, she absolutely loves high school sports and you can typically find her at the main entrance to the cave selling tickets and maybe trying to, uh, watch as much of the game as possible during that time. Uh, but she did say the best part of that job is seeing my past LaSalle kids thriving on the court or field. Um, and then another coworker did share about Lisa. Uh, "She is the type of coworker you enjoy because she brings both a fresh and real perspective to her work each day. In the time I've known Lisa, she has always spoken positively about her position, her coworkers, and serving the students at LaSalle. She is a leader of her cafeteria and kitchen group and does a great job creating a team atmosphere with her colleagues. Even when sharing frustrations about specific situations, Lisa is great about seeing the big picture and remaining positive about her work. She is passionate about helping people, which is a superb attribute to possess in the school setting. Congratulations to Lisa Thompson as a much deserved job-well-done recipient." So tonight, we get to say to Lisa, "Job well done," and she is here if she wants to come on up. So we thank you for that. And, uh, we love you, we really love you. Also, uh, we heard you like Angelo, so we do have a gift for you. So you can enjoy that. So if you like anything.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. Um, I do truly absolutely love my job. Sorry, my voice is off. Um, it's been gone for a while, so the kids have been looking for it for me, but we haven't found it totally yet, so. But, um, it's really easy to do your job when you love your job. And I, like I said, I wear many hats here, um, in the school corporation, uh, and I love every job that I do. So, um, I just want to say thank you and, uh, that's it. Thanks.
3.02 recognition of Mishawaka High School Scholastic Writing Club students, Mr. Eubright.
Good evening, Dr. Stevens, President Parks, and fellow school board members. My name is Randy Eubright and I am an English teacher at Mishawaka High School. I've also been the club sponsor of our creative writing club for two years, and, uh, this is the second year in a row, actually, that I'm here to help, uh, recognize and celebrate the success that several of our students have had with the scholastic art and writing competition. Firstly, Lincoln Deneve, a senior, uh, won a silver key in this competition for his poem, "Roar of the Night." Uh, and Lincoln, so say hi to everyone.
Hi.
Perfect. Uh, Ryland Roth, uh, who I do not see, um, won also a silver key for her personal essay and memoir entitled, uh, "The One I Could Not Kill." And so a round of applause for Ryland, please. Uh, what's impressive about those specific accomplishments is that, um, those students, uh, it was their first submissions to the writing portion of the competition into highly competitive categories, poetry and also, again, uh, short story. And so I was really impressed, um, by their, um, awards. Uh, then we have Kate Hill, who for the second year in a row earned a gold key. This one was for her personal essay and memoir entitled, "Epiphany: Why I Will Be A Journalist." Um, so a round of applause for Kate. Uh, and then I have to take a deep breath for Emma Parsons, uh, to list all of her awards and recognitions that she earned, um, including three silver keys, one of them for a critical essay, uh, two also for her personal essay and memoir submissions. She earned an honorable mention for a journalism piece entitled, "Liberation of Literature," and also a gold key for her, another personal essay and memoir entitled, "Fingertips." And as I kind of joked with Emma, she completed the scholastic writing hat-trick by earning a honorable mention, a silver key, and a gold key, um, so which I think is quite impressive for Emma Parsons. And because both Kate and Emma earned gold keys, their pieces will move on to the national level of the competition where, uh, we will know March 22nd, um, about the results, and so hopefully we'll be back here then, uh, to give you some more good news. Um, and finally, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the school board for this opportunity to not just recognize, but also celebrate our students and for me personally to thank them, their families, um, and also, um, our school community, including Ms. Buckman and other educators and admin at Mishawaka High School, um, who've encouraged and supported our kids to participate in writing competitions, which as you can imagine, it takes a lot of not only creativity and dedication and work, but courage to put your work out there. Um, so again, I want to thank not just these students, but all students who participated in the competition. And finally, I look forward to the opportunity to working with our students to take advantage of more future, uh, writing competitions and opportunities to further the power of their voices. Um, and then I believe that Ms. Buckman had one more announcement to make.
Hi. I would like to recognize Kate. Um, we submitted her work to the Indiana High School Press Association, and she was awarded third in the state for her news writing. So please, go to the MHSAllTold.net, see her work.
Thank you.
Very impressive. Congratulations, and we look forward to hearing more. 3.03, LaSalle Elementary School presentation, Mr. Demongus.
Good evening, Dr. Stevens, President Parks, members of the board. We are very excited to welcome you to LaSalle, uh, for tonight's board meeting. Uh, we're also excited to have everyone here. Uh, we'd like to share a few things we feel like are going well here. Uh, we're going to talk about, so you can hit, yes, there we go. One Book, One School, Student Leadership Team, and our Whole Brain Teaching are going to be three of our highlights. Uh, so first up, we have Mr. O'Hara with One Book, One School.
Thank you, and I have a couple of other guests that we're, uh, I'm happy to have join me. Here at LaSalle, one of our initiatives is to foster a culture of literacy, and we want students to not only learn to read, but we want them to love and to value reading. And we know that reading along with being read too has a great impact on, uh, on students and how it extends just beyond hearing stories. And to help foster that love for reading this year, we're doing One Book, One School. Thanks, Mr. D. This year, we're doing One Book, One School, and this is an initiative that encourages all students and staff, uh, to read the same book. And tonight, I've brought a couple of students along with our secretary, Mrs. Jadway, who's going to make her way up here as well to share her experience as a parent. Uh, and with me tonight, I have Odie and Bryson, who are going to share a little bit about their experience with this year's book, "The One and Only Ivan."
Hi, everyone, I'm Odie Greinke.
Hello, everyone, I'm Bryson Chevry. One Book, One School is where everyone at LaSalle is reading the same book, "The One and Only Ivan." We have reading logs that tell us what pages to read each night, but you can read ahead if you want. This helps to read at our own pace.
I am actually already finished with the book. When I get home from school, I read with my dad. This has been a great experience bonding with my family.
Usually, I'm not interested in reading, but "The One and Only Ivan" is changing that.
We think the book is so good, we wanted to share it with you. As a special gift, each of you will get to take home your very own copy of "The One and Only Ivan."
And as they're passing those out to the school board, the members of the board, uh, here to share her experience from a parent's perspective is Mrs. Jadway, our amazing secretary, and she's going to share her thoughts.
So I've enjoyed reading "The One and Only Ivan" together with my fifth grade daughter. We take turns reading out loud, and I like that we can read the book a little or aloud at a time. Um, I like how this reading strategy connects home with school and builds a community of readers. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, I know they're reading from a script, but that's scripts that they wrote and it was stuff that they've, they've gone through, and it's really cool to, to see them, them blossom like this. Uh, next up, we have Mrs. Miller and our student leadership team, who, uh, greeted you as you
Hi, everyone, my name is Emily Miller. I teach fifth grade here at LaSalle. Um, I'm part of the lighthouse team for LaSalle, and so one day in October at a lighthouse meeting, we brainstormed having a student leadership team. There was not really much to it, we were just like, we knew we wanted one. Fast forward to later that night at 2:00 AM when I should be sleeping, but let's be honest, all good ideas come when you should be doing something else, right? So at 2:00 AM, I grabbed my phone, I'm like, I have this great idea, I need to send an email to my team. So I emailed my team at 2:00 AM and I said, "I think we should do fifth grade student leadership team. If we do fifth grade next year, and when they're in sixth grade, they can train the fifth graders next year, so that way it's just kind of like a rolling thing." And they loved it. So, fast forward to later, like a couple, a week later or something like that, I gave them applications. And so the first batch of our leadership team was made of eight students, and it was all application-based. We had probably over a dozen to two dozen applications, and we made it down to eight. They, so there's eight of these people. If you've been on the leadership team since October, can you raise your hand? So, we got most of them here, so these students have been on since October. I knew I wanted to expand it, and so after Christmas break, I came to my team, my fifth grade team, and said, "Give me recommendations on who you think would be great leaders." So our team of eight became a team of 16 based on teacher recommendations. I'm so incredibly proud of this team and what they've done, and so I'm going to step aside and let Aubrey and Mercedes tell you a little bit more about why they like being on our team and what the leadership team does.
Hi, I'm Aubriella, I'm a part of the LaSalle leadership team. We have two teams, A and B. I'm on the A team. On Wednesdays and Fridays, I help on ki- I help the kindergarten and second grade in the cafeteria. On Monday, I help out Ms. Zimmer's kindergarten class. The B team helps with recycling on Wednesday after announcements. Also, at the end of the day on Friday, they help with being, they help with our Friday packs. Being a part of the LaSalle leadership team, I see it's a helping hand for the teachers.
Hi, I'm Mercedes Garcia, and I like being on the leadership team because I get to show the younger students how to be a good role model and I get to help others. We have a lot of jobs the students enjoy. We have people that we can trust and talk to. I personally like the Friday packs and the recycling. To be a part of the leadership team means you are always ready to lend a helping hand or just being a friend.
I'm going to go ahead and introduce our student leadership team, so I say your name, if you could step forward. Chris, Odie, Chloe, Mihak, Cheyenne, Lola, Dewan, Izzy, Aubrey, and Mercedes. And there's about five of them that aren't here and able to make it, but these five are here, and the next few slides are pictures of them in action.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Miller, uh, and our student leadership team. Um, next up, we have Whole Brain Teaching. Um, so first, um, you can bring up one more slide, that'd be great. So first, I want to talk about, um, it's a part of Whole Brain Teaching, we are, uh, talking glorious kindness, that's one of the five virtues, and, uh, we're explicitly teaching students, uh, how to be gloriously kind of people. It starts at the beginning of the year when we focus on simple things like manners, please thank you and you're welcome, things that, you know, kids these days don't say or use. So we're explicitly teaching them because, um, we, we want them, we expect that behavior and, and we want them to, to take that to the community. Um, we're, we're working on things like returning a grin from, for a grin, um, making eye contact, uh, positive responding to a greeting, you know, and, and that's something that I hope that as you walked in, you saw our student leadership team give you that. Um, I recently had a principal from outside the district talk about how welcomed he felt by our students and staff. Um, he observed how happy students were coming in to the building, and I, I got special permission to play some music, but every morning, we greet our students with music, um, coming in, day in and day out, something I did as a teacher, um, and it's something I, I expanded here, uh, at the car rider line. Uh, we're thumping, we're going, you know, you get Mrs. Mearsman out there, she's worried about her hair, but she's dancing, she's ready to go. Uh, it's great. Um, so that's the, the first part of Whole Brain Teaching. Whole Brain Teaching has a million different things that we implement, um, as part of it. Glorious kindness, the, the virtue, I wanted to highlight that, and then the second thing is, uh, the Superimprover wall. Um, so at this time, um, Elijah, can you come up? Uh, the Superimprover wall is like a living video game, so students collect stars, um, to basically level up, um, and you'll see here on the map that, uh, I'm gonna let Elijah help with this, okay? All right, so, uh, Elijah's a third grader here at LaSalle, and you step right here, so you see that camera right there? And you see those people right there, that's what we're going to be. So he is like a rock star, he shares a ton of great knowledge, and so I wanted to kind of keep it casual with him. He, and so I'm just going to kind of ask him some questions as if we're just talking about it, uh, because he's a huge superfan of, of Superimprover. So, uh, Elijah, what are some levels in, in Superimprover?
There's turtle, penguin, kangaroo, goldhawk, silverhawk, bronzehawk, cheetah, blackbollard, kangaroo, panda, tiger, cheetah, blackbollard, and finally, pilgrim falcon.
Nice, and how do you get stars?
By, like, standing tall and proud in the hallway, level zero in the hallway, and improving on stuff that you didn't do good on before.
Uh, what level are you on?
Cheetah with 30 stars, only need 20 more to level up to blackbollard.
Woo! Hey, you're moving, man. Um, you told, you're telling me this, this afternoon about what you liked about red, bronze, silverhawk, what was that you liked about, that, those levels? Do you remember?
The words, red, bronze, silver, gold, pilgrim, and black for blackbollard, redhawk, bronzehawk, silverhawk, goldhawk, and pilgrim falcon, those are all in, those words are in cursive.
Yeah, they're in cursive, kind of a big deal. Um, so who's the highest kid in your class?
Liam, because he has, because he's a bronzehawk. He just leveled up yesterday.
Yeah, so like, when I say he's a superfan, like, you can say like, hey, how many more stars has so-and-so got, and he can be like, oh, only four more. Um, Elijah, anything else you'd want to level up, you, you'd like to share about Superimprover
The number of stars in total for all the improvers is exactly 240.
And, and why is it 240? We talked about this, because you and I were t-
Because there's like three of each number, three fives, three tens, three twenties, three, three forties.
Nice, and 240 is the pilgrim falcon max speed, uh, which is kind of a cool, fun fact. Um, so before Elijah takes questions, I'd like to also welcome two students, and they're a little nervous, um, so before we do that, I'm gonna let them, uh, start walking up here. Alan, can you just kind of flip through this, the, so when we have kids level up, we call and we make a huge deal out of it, uh, we, we do it over the announcements. When we first started doing this, we did it every day, uh, you know, during the day, and it was like, okay, this is enough, like, can we do it? Certain times, we do it in the morning and the afternoon. Um, and you see big kids, little kids, they, they get fired up. I had a sixth grader say, "Hey, Mr. Marcus, when you call my name, will you use my middle name too?" Like, like, big deal, you're like, ah, kids don't care about getting a stars, because there's not a trinket, there's not a treasure box after, it's, it's just the, the leveling up, um, that really is a lot of the brain research behind it. Um, and when we added this map in the office and I started talking about Elijah, I said, "Hey Elijah, I want you to start talking at this board meeting." He said, "He, he's been in my office more times than you can see." I'm just checking out the map. You know, so, you know, again, he's, he's a superstar. So, right here, it's perfect place to stop, part to stop here, Alan. Um, today, uh, we actually recognized two students who just leveled up to our highest level here, Rayland and Cameron, um, and they're in Ms. Lidgard's class, she's just throwing rain and stars like, like the roofs on, you know, leaking or something like that. So, um, a huge ten finger, so we've never done this before, I'm going to make all of you, if you can, just take your hands like this, and we're going to, right here, these two are the really nervous, and we're going to go, woo! And my principal colleagues are like, oh my gosh, you did it. Hey, so great job, good job. And what a great way to partner with our community, with our parents, to, to get on the phone with these two, uh, their, their parents today and say, hey, they leveled up. Can you make it tonight at 6 o'clock at the board meeting? They're like, we'll try, and here they are, like, Rayland's mom came from Indianapolis just to make it here, so it's a really a big deal and really cool part of, of, uh, our community here at LaSalle, so, thank you. All right, to, to stay out of trouble, I'm going to try to stick to script on this last part, which is, um, each year I've been at LaSalle, we start the year off with a theme and a coordinating shirt. Uh, so this year's theme was "Win the Day," and, uh, my wife's watching me get ready today, and she says, "Are you dressing down for the board meeting?" And I said, "No." I said, "But how can I get away with wearing a t-shirt?" Like, Jeff wore a, Mr. Yo, he wore a suit and tie, I'm like, oh man, that's a lot of pressure. Well, you just get everybody else to wear the same shirt and you're okay. So, um, this year's theme was "Win the Day." Yesterday is history, tomorrow, uh, is mystery. Win the day. Imagine how much better your life would be if instead of obsessing over the past or worrying about the future, you set out to win the day every day. Um, so at this time, I like to call up all of our staff members that are here, if you guys just want to come line up here, that'd be great, sorry. I didn't tell them this was part of it. So if you've been around Mishawaka schools, you know that LaSalle's full of grit, character, and positivity. Even though we have a few new faces, this staff is no different. Um, I like to thank each of you for showing up day in and day out. I'm gonna try and talk in, look at you. Let's do this for a moment, sorry, bored. Education's never easy, uh, especially under today's current restraints, and I like to publicly recognize your resilience, effort, and growth mindset. You bring it every day. I speak for Mr. O'Hara myself, when I say it's an honor to serve alongside you, we cherish every moment we get to be your LaSalle principals. Uh, so thank you for helping us win the day. So thank you for our LaSalle staff. All right, you can sit back down, or just hit the door, whichever. Uh, so, Dr. Stevens, President Parks, members of the board, thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to take any comments or questions at this time.
Uh, we're impressed, as always, and you're a pleasure, and LaSalle group is a pleasure, so we, we look forward to doing these, and, and you did a great job, so thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
So before we move on to business, if everyone who is here would like to leave, this is your chance to get out. Uh, if you'd like to stay for business, you're more than welcome. We'll give you a few minutes. Thank you to all the parents and the students who came tonight. All right. If the LaSalle staff wants to come and sit down, you, there's room for you. Uh, so we're moving on, four comments and questions from the floor. 4.01, or 4.01, representatives of the Mishawaka parent group. 4.02, representatives of school employees. 4.03, representatives of the Mishawaka Education Foundation. We have Katie.
Good evening, my name is Katie Chamberlain. I am, uh, president of the Board of Directors for the Mishawaka Education Foundation. President Parks, Dr. Stevens, the rest of the board, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share some updates with you. Um, I just have a few tonight, we're, uh, working away the winter, um, getting ready for all our, all of our events, uh, in the spring. Um, first one being the major saver cards that will be distributed to the schools pretty soon. Um, those are the cards that have, you know, like, you're showing up to Culver's for your cheeseburger, you can buy one, get one free with this card. Uh, so those will be for $15, so, um, hit up students, hit up board members, we'll be carrying them too. Um, those will be available March 25th through the end of April. Uh, and then just a little note about that, um, the selling of these major savers, saver cards has brought back $120,000 back to, um, School City students, so, um, buy those up. Uh, we're also happy to announce an inaugural, um, job fair that we're part- We're also happy to announce an inaugural, um, job fair that we're partnering with the high school. That's going to be on April eighteenth from nine thirty to eleven thirty AM. That is gonna be for the seniors and juniors of the high school. We are currently soliciting area businesses, um, to participate in that. So if you have a business, if you know someone who owns a business who would like to be a part of that, please contact us. Let us know, we'd be happy to, to get them set up. And then last but not least, uh, we have our MEF luncheon on June sixth. I will say, if you were there last year, I'm going to apologize. I think we all got a little hangry by the end of it. This year we have a new venue. We're gonna be at Morris Park Country Club. So, um, please come out and join us. We're gonna be honoring Judy Hurst, Jeff Emmons, and the late Mike Faulkner for all their contributions to both School City MEF and just the greater Mishawaka community. So put it on your calendar. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Four point zero four, the general public. We have Laura Gaskill that has signed up to speak. Come on up. Oh, with Tammy Burns, sorry. Both of you together. Sorry. Side note, supposed to read it all.
Uh, school board, Dr. Spencer, Holly Parks, thank you for letting us speak today. I am, Lauren and I are representing First Lego League at Twin Branch School, who are going on to Worlds and the only, uh, FLL team in the state to be doing so. And I apologize for being late today, but I was driving a young lady from Mishawaka across town. She lives well on the other side of South Bend. And in this rain, I didn't want her after, after school activities to be having to go out and try to catch a bus. So that brings me into the topic today, which is gratitude. Because doing that reminds me of just how much I appreciate what I have and what we have been given. And so first off, Mrs. Brandenburg, thank you so much for all you've done for us at Twin Branch School. It's been wonderful this year. Also, all, any and all of the staff at Twin Branch have been so supportive and we're so grateful. I'm going to put a special thank you out to Haley because of her graphics, which our shirts are just so wonderful because of her. And now some big announcements. I have a check here for ten thousand dollars from Views on Learning, uh, from Lesson Tim there, who, uh, they do our nonprofit educational foundation and they have provided ten thousand for us to go on to Worlds in Houston in April. And with that and other donations, and there's so many, I'm only gonna mention a few. John and Marcia Reed, um, Beacon and South Bend Clinic, uh, the Ideas Center at Notre Dame and the Energy Center, and so many others. We've raised twenty-five thousand dollars. We are on to Worlds. Thank you so much, community. I, all of the people that have donated on the GirlFundMe site, there is, I, I really can't express how much we appreciate all of you for this. It's been, I, I tell you, I have been so stressed and when this check came in and others came afterwards, it, it was literally led me to tears. So we have one other announcement.
We, um, we also received a, um, donation from, uh, the Italian Club di Amici's, which isn't too far from here. They've been very, very gracious with us. They've offered, um, to host a trivia night for us as well, um, to help raise funds. And that, that is the, also the contributing factor to there. We're very glad that the children will be able to eat on the trip. Be able to feed them. Um, and, um, we're just very, very excited to, oh, what's that, April fourteenth? Yes, for, uh, April fourteenth for our trivia nights. Um, we'll be selling some tables.
Yes, if you wanna get a table, do it now because there's only twelve tables. So if, come and talk to us, we're excited.
It's gonna be very fun. We anticipate, um, a lot of excitement and, yes. So we, um, we are not only lucky enough to get the opportunity, um, to have these kids be celebrated and get to experience, uh, going to the Johnson Space Center in Houston, um, getting to spend four days, observing eight hundred other robotics teams, um, internationally. But we also can fulfill the promise to continue the program. So that's, we're finding sustainability from the community and we're so grateful for admin and MEF and the school system for all of their support all these years. And we just couldn't be more grateful. So we're just, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. That's, that's great to hear. Moving on to the consent agenda, five point zero one, approval of the minutes of the February eighth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting. It is recommended that the minutes of the February eighth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting be approved as presented. Five point zero two, approval of the bill warrants and payroll. It is recommended that the board approve the, the payments of bill warrants and payroll and the amounts are three million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand and forty-six dollars and seven cents from the appropriate funds. Five point zero three, approval of the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Six, reports and discussion items, six point zero one, legislative updates, updates. Mrs. Lehman.
Thank you. I don't have very much. Again, um, bills are still in, being heard in committees. But there is an update that I'd like to share with you as far as how, uh, bills are moving forward from this point on. So there was a couple of key deadlines occurring that occurring, occurred this week and will occur. First, the House Representative had its committee, uh, report deadline yesterday. Second, the Senate has set its committee report deadline for this Thursday, February twenty-third. So for bills to continue, um, in the process, they must be voted out of a committee by these respective deadlines. Bills now moved out of committee will be ineligible for further action. The third reading deadline for bills to get out of the House will be twenty, uh, February twenty-seventh and then followed by February twenty-eighth in the Senate. Bills then cross over to the second chamber for the next phase of the session. So after this week, I expect, you know, more activity will happen within the next month as some of these critical bills that are moving out of committee will move to, um, each chamber.
Great. Thank you for the update. Seven, human resources, seven point zero one, personnel report. Mr. Laban.
Uh, thank you, President Parks, members of the board. This evening, we are recommending the appointment of three certified teaching positions, four support staff and five extrajudicial assignments. I'd also like to take the opportunity to recognize three new retirees this evening. First, we have Mrs. Lisa Kester, music teacher serving Emmons and Liberty Elementary Schools. Lisa was first hired in Mishawaka in August of nineteen ninety-seven. And she is ending her twenty-sixth year teaching career at Mishawaka following the conclusion of her current school year. Next, we have Mrs. Janine Mayberry. Janine was hired in August of ninety-six. Uh, and though she served as an administrator, uh, for many years at both LaSalle and Liberty Elementary Schools, she is ending her career at Patel and doing so where it all started back in the classroom. So it's, it's been a full circle journey for Janine and one that we are specifically privileged and grateful for. Um, and last but not least, uh, my privilege to recognize Mr. Dean Swihart, loving music teacher at Humms and Twin Branch Elementary Schools. Dean was hired in August of, uh, two thousand and three and he's already looking forward and planning his next venture of service, uh, following the end of the, of the current school year. So collectively, Lisa, Janine and Dean have a combined seventy-three years of service to the, the corporation. And I'd like to extend my heartfelt appreciation and wish them the very best in these next adventures. So. As always, happy to answer any questions that the board may have, but if not, it's recommended the Board of School Trustees approve the personnel report dated February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Seven point zero two, approval of the non-renewal, non-renewal of administrative contract. Dr. Stevens.
Thank you, President Parks. Uh, it's recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the non-renewal of the administrative contract of Dr. Sarah Hickel as Assistant Superintendent effective June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's further recommended that an attorney acting at the direction of the board on the school trustees deliver written notice of non-renewal to Dr. Hickel before March first, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
It's been mo, or motioned and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. There is nothing in eight in curriculum instruction and technology, nine business and operations, nine point zero one, approval of contract with premium concrete services for Beager pre-K playground. Mr.? How are you?
I'm doing good. President Parks, Dr. Stevens, uh, members of school board trustees, um, got another exciting board agenda. On February eighth, uh, twenty twenty-three, we opened up bids for, uh, the pre-K, uh, playground at Beager. There was two companies that, uh, provided bids, uh, premium services and REODA Construction. Premium Services, uh, was the low responsive bidder, um, and we were able to take the alternates. The alternates were, um, the additional fence and gates and the mow strip and, uh, going from the playground to the west of the property line. So, uh, it's exciting news for the, the pre-K program over there. So I'm looking for a favorable recommendation.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, nine point zero two, approval of the quote for the star flooring and sanding, resurfacing and repair of gym floors. Mr. Miskin.
Yep, me again. Um, so, uh, what we, what we did was, uh, we took, uh, two companies around. We showed them Emmons and, uh, um, LaSalle's gym floor. And at the same time, um, my assistant Ken and I, we had some problems at, uh, John Young with the floor that needed repair and the floor is cupped from previous water damage. And at the high school, we had, uh, the east gym, uh, we had two, uh, I don't know, damaged, uh, areas that we need to get fixed. So we actually, you're doing more work, um, than, than planned out in the budget. So, and we're under budget doing all this work. So I'm looking for a favorable recommendation. I do have the other quote. I didn't provide that in the board. But if you'd want me to share that with you folks, I would be more than happy to. But, uh, so we got almost double the work, under budget and, uh, just moving forward, trying to spread the wealth throughout all, all the buildings and once again, looking for a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. So moved, so.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Nine point zero three, approval of the insurance agreement for property casualty and workers compensation. Dr. Stevens.
Thank you, President Parks. Uh, I'm gonna invite Mr. Wayland Thompson from Gallagher Global Brokerage, uh, to present a little information to you, uh, a little background while he's, uh, getting ready to go. Administration has worked with our agent Gallagher, uh, Global Brokerage to renew our property and casualty, workers compensation and cyber insurance, uh, and that renewal would be effective March first, two thousand and twenty-three. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Thompson.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, we look forward to sharing the results of our marketing effort this year for the property and casualty renewal. So thank you for having us. Uh, we can go to the next slide. Uh, this is statistical graph of your current program and I know it's too small to really read. I've put three arrows on three areas that we're gonna be focusing on during this presentation. So if we go to the next slide, I'll, I'll go ahead and jump in. First thing we always like to report is what did we do to market the program out in the open market? That's very important in what's called a hard market, which is what we're experiencing right now. The two things I really wanna point out to you, these are all the different insurance carriers that we went to to market it. Uh, there are two things that stand out from this graph for me. Number one, there are three new carriers that have decided to move out of the K-12 space. Unfortunately, that's a trend that we continue to see. There are reasons for that. I'll cover here in a moment. The other thing is, uh, we did market the property pretty heavily because we did have, uh, some increases there in values that I'll discuss in a moment. And, uh, the good news is, is out of all of the carriers that we marketed, your incumbent Liberty definitely had the best rate for property and, and that'll be reflected here when we talk about the pricing in a moment. Next slide. Uh, two major things that I wanna point out where we had large property exposure increases. So when we talk about insurance, what happens year to year? There are basically two things that factor the, the cost of the insurance and that's your exposures, your building values, uh, number of students, uh, payroll for work comp. And then there's also the rates that the insurance company is charging. So what I wanna point out here is every five years, Liberty Mutual, who's been your carrier for quite a while, will do, uh, new appraisals to up the, the, or to review the, the values of the buildings that you have. It's been five years since that happened. We got a report when we became your broker a few months ago. We knew there was gonna be a substantial increase at which time we reported that to the school corporation. You can see that the building values were raised ninety million dollars, uh, from the last time this was done five years ago. And then the contents values, everything that's inside the buildings was raised from sixteen million up to twenty-seven million. Uh, this is obviously very important because if you go through a large loss or a significant loss, you want those insured to value or you can insure, or you can, uh, incur co-insurance penalties. But we do realize that this is a large increase. What we've been advising our clients over the last two to three years because of inflation, uh, because of supply chain issues and all these really started with COVID. Uh, we've been encouraging clients to increase those values to make sure that they are up to par if you do have a loss. And this is kind of being reflected in this once every five year appraisal process through Liberty. Next slide. Uh, the other two things that are measured are payroll for your work comp and then enrollment numbers for all of your liability lines. Payroll, there was an increase in seven point five percent year over year this year. The work comp experience mod, which is a, a mod assigned by the state that basically gets applied based on the losses that you're having, did tick up slightly from one point one seven to one point two zero, which affected the rate. And then your student enrollment increased by about six and a half percent. And, uh, that is the basis, the rating basis for all of your liability lines. Next slide. Okay, I know there's a lot of numbers on this slide. These are basically the results per line of insurance. And I guess really the, the two main things that I wanna point out here are that, uh, the two large premium items, the largest premium items are your property at a hundred and fifty-one thousand coming in this year and then your work comp at almost three hundred thousand dollars. You'll notice that the exposures raised significantly for the work, or for the property, which I mentioned earlier by getting those values up. But the rate was actually a, a, a very small rate increase at two point nine nine percent. And then the work comp was, uh, basically a flat renewal. The two areas that you're gonna see the largest increases in rate are the twenty-three percent on the educator's legal liability and the umbrella at sixteen percent. That's mainly being driven by large lawsuits against school corporations across the country. We see those continuing to rise. We see, uh, worse claims happening. So that's really what's driving that rate and that's happening across the country, uh, for K-12 schools. It's also a reason that many carriers are pulling out of this space unfortunately. Next slide. This is a result, uh, total result of the renewal. Uh, you'll notice that the total premium, uh, went from five hundred and fifty-three thousand to six hundred and eighty-five thousand. Pretty substantial increase of about twenty, uh, just under twenty-four percent. But keep in mind that most of that increase is being driven by the increased values and the increased exposures. The composite rate increase that the insurance company applied was only seven and a half percent, which is right in line with what we're expecting. We're telling people to expect anywhere between six and twelve percent increases. So the rate increase wasn't, uh, as much as the exposure increases is what, what's really driving that, which was again, forty-four percent on the property, uh, eight percent on the work comp. Next slide. I did wanna discuss very quickly, uh, four enhancements that we've made to the policy, uh, for this next policy year. Uh, there is a one million dollar extra expense added. Uh, we were able to get that and negotiate that in for no additional premium. The reason this is important is, uh, school corporations don't suffer a loss of income from a large loss like a business might because you're gonna still receive funding. Extra expense is an extra coverage though that's very important to help pay for things like temporary buildings, uh, brought in. If there's a damaged school and you have to have temporary classrooms, uh, relocation, things like that. That's a very important coverage that was not on the program previously that we were able to add. Another add was the law enforcement legal. Uh, that was not on the previous policy and that covers any actions by law enforcement, uh, folks on the premise that if anything happens and, and the school corporation is sued as a result of something they've done, this provides coverage for you for that. Uh, the business personal property, which is the contents values, we've been working closely, uh, with Jenny Sanders and the operations team to dial those in. When we got the higher numbers from Liberty's appraisal, we started to look at a building by building basis and start to dial those in. That'll be a continued process through the next policy year, uh, as we wanna get those, uh, right where they need to be in case there's a loss in the future. And then the last thing is we did consolidate carriers by moving the work comp back to Liberty Mutual. That allowed us to have more leverage. That added about three hundred thousand dollars a premium. We were actually able to leverage that and get the rates down in the property area because we, we did that. So. Uh, those are four enhancements. And then the last slide here, this is what we're looking forward to in the next year, our priority. Uh, we're in the process of analyzing the loss data that we've collected, uh, for the school corporation. And we're plugging that into our analytics system. And what we're gonna be able to do is come back to the school corporation with detailed, uh, analysis of where those losses are coming from. And then we will be able to take a very detailed approach at attacking those areas and trying to get losses down, specifically in the area of work comp. Uh, if we can get that mod down. Uh, if we can get that mod down from a one point two down to a flat one, which is where you really want it to be or below, uh, that could, uh, realize a savings of up to sixty thousand dollars. So that'll be something we're working closely with the school corporation on in the, uh, coming months, uh, as soon as we get that data back. And that concludes my presentation. I'll open it up to any questions.
Are there any questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Ten, there is nothing in policy updates. Eleven is superintendent's report and action items. Dr. Stevens.
Thank you, President Parks. Uh, just a few things and their information related. First of all, the Blizzard Ball, uh, was held at MHS for students on Sunday, February nineteenth at the University of Notre Dame. The event was well attended and the venue sets a very high bar for future events. A special thank you goes out to the Mishawaka Parent Group, uh, and the MHS staff for coordinating and supervising, uh, what I found to be a very nice event for our students. Uh, next, uh, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the operating referendum and provide some information. Again, the Political Action Committee, Our Children, Your Future, continues to work through the operating referendum campaign. The committee had a meeting with Mishawaka City Council member Woody Emmons at St. Bebos on February sixteenth. Uh, the group will have an open meeting for any School City of Mishawaka staff interested in learning more as well. These meetings will be held at the Patel Center at six o'clock on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth and another one on Thursday, March thirtieth. And as always, if any individual is interested in learning more, please feel free to visit supportmishawakaschools.com. And the last item I'd like to add before you take it over, President Parks, is a special thanks to LaSalle, um, Mr. Demongos and his staff for hosting tonight's meeting. Uh, very well done and, and we certainly enjoyed coming out here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Twelve, communications, twelve point zero one, public announcements. The next meeting of School City of Mishawaka Board of School Trustees will be March eighth, twenty twenty-three at the Administration Center. If there's nothing else to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, LaSalle. Great job tonight. We look forward to it.
Thank you.